Probably. Probably almost forty years.
Oh, yeah. I only knew him when he was the teacher of my kids.
Okay.
I think he was arrested.
Yeah. Four o'clock.
Okay, huh? Started looking at pictures instead of shutting my sound off.
Of grandkids or?
No.
Scenery?
Wasp nest.
Oh goodness.
Alright. Meeting will come to order. Um, for public information, a copy of Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of this meeting room on the east wall. Um, we'll have roll call.
Harris.
Here.
Meyer. Reisig.
Here.
Blue.
Here.
Um, we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I think we'll go to the, uh, we need a approval of the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda as printed.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Um, we'll go ahead and.
Oh, no. Oh, I do have it on here.
We'll go ahead and vote electronically here.
Okay, you have three yeses.
Alright, motion's carried. Um, next item says the board reserves the right to enter into a closed session if deemed necessary. Don't have any on the agenda tonight, but just in case that happens to come up. Uh, so we'll go to the first item, which is discuss and consider approval of resolution of adoption and appropriations. Uh, Lisa.
Okay, um, I did not give you copy of this, but I can once we get it hopefully approved and put it with your packet. Um, let me read to you the resolution. I put it up on the screen. And this is kind of a canned thing, put in our budget message, our budget information from the auditor of public accounts. So, it's nothing I developed or anything I've carried forward, just what they, what they recommend you put together. So, it goes. Whereas a proposed county budget for the fiscal year July one twenty twenty five to June thirty, prepared by budget-making authority, was transmitted to the county board on today, twenty fifth of September. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners or Supervisors of Scotts Bluff County as follows. That the budget for the fiscal year July one through June thirty, as categorically evidenced by the budget document B, and the same hereby is adopted as the budget for Scotts Bluff County for said fiscal year. Section two, that the offices, departments, activities, and institutions herein named are hereby authorized to expend the amounts herein appropriated to them during the fiscal year beginning July one twenty twenty five and ending June thirty twenty twenty six. And section three, that the necessar- that the income necessary to finance the appropriations made and expenditures authorized shall be provided out of the unencumbered cash balance in each fund. Revenues other than taxation to be collected during the fiscal year in each fund and tax levy requirements for each fund, dated and passed this twenty fifth day of September.
Okay. And so you want us to approve this resolution as for this item?
Yes.
First, right?
That would be.
Alright, any?
Unless you want me to talk about my, about budget packets first, but.
Okay, this is the, what I have on the screen here?
Yep, that's what she just read.
What I have on my screen? Is that on your screen?
My screen?
Oh.
Oh. I'm sorry. Resolution adoption and appropriations.
So, I'm, I have the right thing?
Uh huh.
Okay, I am ready. I'm sorry, once you guys are.
I have a question before. I don't know if it's the right time to ask it or not, or. Can I ask a question before? On this interest you've got here at nine hundred and seventy-three thousand? Is that the total interest for the duration of the bond?
Of the four bonds? Yeah.
Don't forget your microphone.
But I didn't know that.
Oh, yes, that is the. For the duration of the life of the bonds.
Okay.
Which they go twenty thirty-one, we put that in our message, didn't we, the other day?
Uh, probably did.
I wrote, oh, no, it's in the, what I'm gonna read here pretty soon. Um, twenty thirty-one, twenty thirty-four, and twenty thirty-seven is when they're paid off.
When they all retire?
Like, one of them, I mean, one of them in twenty thirty-seven, two of them in twenty thirty-four, and one of them in twenty thirty-one.
You'll be here before you know it.
Yeah.
You'll just still be a young'un.
Yeah, well, yeah, there you go. But it, you guys, these are the things you need to sign. Do you want me, you wanna discuss some of the budget information first and then come back and pass that, or? I guess I would, if something I could add to agendas, discuss the budget packet, or?
I don't think we need to.
Well, this particular one does not have numbers assigned to it. This is more a general statement that we're gonna.
Right.
Fund what we're passing and. So, this one, I think we could sign.
Right.
Then we could maybe sign the other one when we're.
Well, we haven't approved it yet.
We need to approve it first.
Don't start signing until we know if it passes.
Yeah, 'cause I don't like that.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll need your signatures on.
That's why we quit doing.
Prior to, prior to approving it?
Oh, yeah, I guess you better approve it and then you can sign it.
Right.
Right.
What a grand idea. I just said that.
Thank you, Kelly.
Well, that's what I was.
That's fine, yeah, go ahead.
Uh, I move that we approve the resolution of adoption and appropriations as presented by the county management accountant.
Second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
Okay, I'm ready. And you have three yeses?
Okay. Now we could probably sign that one anyway.
Correct.
Okay? Alright, and then we'll go to the next item, which is discuss and consider approval of resolution for setting the property tax request. Lisa?
Well.
This is a good time to talk about you, but.
This is the time to get going. Okay, second. So, we do have a document again, another, I, I didn't make up the verbiage, this is what they give me. But, anyway, I wanna talk about your packets and what's in the packets, and then we can go through and approve the tax ask if everything goes well. So, like I said, I've given you a packet of your budget at this point. If you want to leave them here, I can do a three-hole punch and put them in a book for you if that's your preference. I have your last year's books, everybody except you. I think you took, you must have taken yours home. I did not see it up there.
Mine's probably in the drawer. Mine's probably right here. I'll check.
Okay, well, maybe it isn't, yeah. Your drawer was locked. And by the way, and it's on my mind, your laptop is in my computer, my room.
Did you take it out of there?
I took it out of there 'cause it was not locked.
Wasn't locked.
It wasn't locked, laptop was in there, and yours and Ken's were both in a drawer, and like Kelly just said, we had a to- umpteen number of kids here.
At least.
In this room, so it was just, anyway.
I always put my, I always got my key right up here anyway, I just put my key right.
Okay, well, for the time being, it's just locked up in my, my room.
Fair enough.
We, this room gets used a lot.
Yeah, it's not hurting anything right there.
Whenever you need it, you can certainly have it, but, okay, but I wanted to tell you a little bit about the breakdown of what I have here. Um, the very beginning is just the cover sheet that the auditor of public accounts gives us. Most of the first section is all documents that they either put together and we, I just load the information. The first section is auditor of public account stuff, and then some supporting schedules of what, you'll recognize some of them because I gave you so many copies of the one front sheet. And then copies of all the general fund budgets, and then the sec- after the last green piece of paper, that's how I separate everything right now, was with those green pieces of paper. And then you'll see all the budgets for the special funds after that. And what I end up doing is basically all this paperwork gets scanned in a scan file and uploaded to the auditor by next Tuesday. So, I don't know that I'll have to wait that long to, hopefully I'll get it done sooner than later. I have one document I do not fully have, full disclosure, one document isn't completely completed. It's, I gotta do some messing with our revenue and get totals for federal, federal receipts and state receipts and local receipts, and it's all takes time, so, anyway. But other than that, you've got in front of you everything I've gotta turn into the auditor of public accounts. You mean to go by them, through them one by one?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
It's up to you, I guess, whatever you, whatever highlights you want us to touch on.
I don't, they, they ask for information that I've, I've shown you a lot about how much we, how much we could levy. There's a, what, a sheet that looks like this, I've shown you this one of how we come up with what we could levy. Called the Property Tax Request Authority Computation Form.
And so.
Is that that co- computation form?
Yeah.
That's this one that, on the top one.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, mine's colored, I didn't color it.
What's mine thirty or twenty-eight, say on yours?
Three hundred and six dollars and seventy-three cents?
Okay, we're all on.
What would have been the maximum we could have levied?
You know, okay.
One dollar more.
What?
Always more than that.
What?
That's what it's saying here. Total property tax request authority fifteen point two nine four, and we're, actual request is fifteen point two nine three.
Yeah. Because I used an exception for two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars using those prior year un- unused restricted, or how to go, unused property tax request authority. I use, we have like seven hundred and nine thousand, I used two seventy-five to bring us up to that baseline levy that we went for. I'm sorry, I said that really strange, but our levy we are going to keep flat. I could have taken more exceptions, but you have to watch what's gonna happen next year. 'Cause there, you could take exceptions if you need for county attorney budget, public defender, public safety services. It's all documented on this sheet. As exceptions, but you take them this year, then you have to subtract them next year, and then either retake another exception. It's just kind of a cycle.
And we didn't wanna do that.
We didn't go into that, but I did use the prior year. Some of the prior year number that we have. That was where we had that lid computation last year, that's now. What's the, what's the word we use? Instead of a lid, we have a cap.
Cap, yes.
So, anyway, that's that information, and next year, there's, the next page goes into, we had seven hundred and nine thousand and prior use, our prior unused property tax requests, we used two hundred and seventy-five thousand, so I still have four hundred and thirty-four thousand to carry forward next year.
What's the seven hundred and nine thousand for again, Lisa?
Prior year.
Okay.
Unused property tax request authority. That I was, that's part of this lid calculation we had gone through in years past. And the auditor of public accounts had given us a schedule of how much you had remaining or how much was allowable to you. And the number for us was seven hundred and nine thousand, of which I did not use at all. I used, that wasn't something else we could do, but just use what we needed, just used what we needed.
You know, and I know Martin understands his taxes, it's like, I talked to Rick Dur this afternoon before I came down, and he was saying that the county share of his property tax, just on his house over there, was twelve hundred dollars, and his total taxes are almost eight thousand. He said, "The schools are just ridiculous." He said, "You guys are not any burden at all." He said, "For what we get from the county," he said, "you guys are not a burden." He said, "With the, you know, we got rescue, uh, you know, we got sheriff's department, we got column center." He said, "Everything you guys do," he said, "compare," he said, "I don't get anything." He said, "I don't have no kids in school," he said, "I've never put a child through Scotts Bluff School," but he said, "I've paid taxes on it all these years."
Yeah, that's really nice to hear.
And he, but he did tell me, he said, "I just wanna tell you guys," he said, "you, he said, "you have a lot of value." He said, "For what his was, it was like, so much, so cheap a month," he said that, it was like.
Rick Dur, friend to the county.
He what?
Rick Dur, friend of the county, huh?
Well, he was just telling me, he said, "For what he gets from the county, compare what he gets from the schools." He said, "We are a big bargain."
We are.
Well, we are, we do a lot of thing, we do a lot of the, the variety of services provided to.
'Cause their schools, five and a half to six times what we're, what we're, what we grow. And like he said, if you don't have any kids there, you get exactly that much back.
Well, our future is there.
My granddaughter thanks you for supporting, thanks for supporting. Okay.
Yep.
Anyway, there's a levy calculation form, and we do not exceed, we, even with the entities we've shared our levy with, we are still in the realm, we are at like a point four four. And we can go up to point four five, plus we have inter-local dollars, so we get a little extra.
Yes, so let me be sure I understand that, and I think I do, but our levy is point three six four or something like that. And then what you're talking about is those entities that we have to share our levy limit with, which is fire departments and.
Um, airport?
Airport, yeah.
Airport, uh.
Cemetery?
Fair.
Cemeteries, Ags, yeah, Ag Society.
Historical.
If you look at, it's this form.
Right.
In here, and that's where, it shows our levy at the top, plus the Ag Society, plus the airport brings our general tax levy up to point three eight. That carries down to the levy limit analysis, and you can, and we're only looking at the levy numbers for the largest. The breakdown's on the next page, but cemetery district, the largest one is point zero zero eight four nine. And that was Creighton Valley, that's out here, what, Gearing Valley area? All the rural fires get point zero four levy, and then the Mitchell range, or which one, whoever. Min- yeah, Mitchell is the largest drainage district, that we share with, point zero one two three three. But, as the, um, us, plus the Ag Society, plus the airport, plus the largest one of those, the most any taxpayer would be levied is point four four five three one nine. And actually, that would be even hard to do if you have Creighton Valley, cemetery's the highest levying, and Mitchell irrigation district is the highest levying irrigation district. Well, you don't, you're not gonna have any property that's going to be contributing both those. Those are totally different areas of our county, right? But, anyway, the most somebody could be burdened with county tax, point four four five three one nine. Plus, we get a little extra gimme, which we aren't using, by our number of inter-locals.
Do you, uh, besides your inter-locals, do you have anything from any of the schools on what they've finished out their levies at? Or what they've put their budgets?
Kelly might, and Kelly's probably finished.
Kelly don't have anything either? I just wondered what, you know, I know like school, are they like one, are they, they're like one point, is it two five?
One point something, point.
One point two five?
Two or one point, yeah.
And it stays there, so if their valuation goes up a hundred million, they can just follow it up a hundred million.
Gearing stayed flat, didn't they tell us that the other night at a meeting, gearing stayed flat, Scotts Bluff went down, has gone down.
Well, it should, because all those valuation, land prices all went way up. I mean, they should have a hundred million dollars in increases up there with all the farmland and all that stuff, 'cause they're, they have a third of the revenue, they've got all the big box stores, they've got all that big stuff up there compared to every other town.
I, I only, I only have school budgets so far from Minotair and Scotts Bluff.
And do you?
Is their tax ask different? I mean, regardless of their levy, what's their tax ask from last year to this year? What's their tax ask look like?
She's looking, she's got it on the screen over here.
I can't see it from there. At that angle, it doesn't look.
So, total for Minotair tax ask is five ninety-three, one thirty-one.
What was it prior?
I don't know.
We'd, we'd have to go back and do some searching for you, sorry.
Five ninety, five ninety-three is.
I can pull it up here in a second, but then.
I'm just, I'm just curious, if, we can move on with this, others I was just asking, 'cause I know.
You don't want Scotts Bluff's number?
They have a whole different way of being able to collect money than we do, and it's.
Oh, absolutely. What's Scotts Bluff's number? I'm curious.
Eighteen million.
Easy, doesn't even make sense.
Oh, forty-one, three fifty-one.
Wow.
Tax asking.
Yeah, let's see.
Tax asking.
Eighteen million.
And, but ours is fifteen, right? So, it, it's not ten times more, it's not five times more.
What's that, right, uh, you talking about?
She said their tax asking is eighteen million dollars.
Okay.
Ours is fifteen.
Okay, but that's one school, that's one school.
That's right. Ours is spread over the whole county.
I take all five schools, but you gotta, we're all.
And theirs isn't.
But you, so you gotta take all the counties' schools, you take all five school districts, total their tax ask.
Right.
Against our tax ask, 'cause then it, it comes to be six ti- or five and a half times is what we're getting.
Okay. I had to stop and think, oh, yeah, you're right, 'cause we're countywide, where that would just be a certain segment, and so our taxable value at four point whatever billion, theirs might be three point one.
They use the same numbers we do, their numbers are.
No, they don't, their valuations are only assigned to the same district.
That's what I'm saying, but we have, like, our county raised three hundred and three million in valuations came up this year. The whole county, the valuations were three hundred and three million increase in valuation.
Okay.
Taxable value. So, I'm just saying, Scotts Bluff alone, with all the big box stores, they own the biggest share of anything big in the county, they should, a, a, a third of that should have went to Scotts Bluff, their should have, their increase should have been a hundred million. The rest of the county should have shared two hundred million increase.
So, Robert's value for the county is four point one billion, correct?
Something like that.
That's your number, right?
Four mil- four point one six two.
And Scotts Bluff School for Scotts Bluff County is two billion one.
So, I hate that much.
So, so.
Huh?
So, Scotts Bluff Schools.
They don't get a valuation, it's half them.
It's half of, they're half of. So, that's more than I thought it would be, I thought it would be, I thought it'd be one.
I thought they would be a bigger chunk.
I thought it'd be ones, they're actually twice what I thought they'd be.
So, that two point one billion has to raise the eighteen million they need.
But they also get valuation from Morrel County, a small portion.
That's true, that's true.
And that's only a million three.
Scotts Bluff does?
Yes.
I didn't think Scotts Bluff School District did, but.
I thought it was Minotair.
I thought it would be Minotair.
Oh, Minotair got that.
It's, it's a part of how we calculate the final levies.
Must be way up the northern.
Anyway, it's interesting how it all comes together, but, anyway, next part was Kelly's resolution at, when she brought the preliminary levies to you.
Uh, I, I better ask one more question before you move on. So, these on the, showing us the Ag Society and then the fire districts and all of that. Technically, we have some control over those levies, or do we not?
Well, we can't exceed our levy, and I think we, you know, I, we've not crossed that bridge.
We've never addressed it.
No, we haven't, but.
I don't remember hearing that question before.
But I think we have the authority, again, they're in our forty-four point four five or point four four. They're part of that.
I agree.
And I, I don't know the whole thing, and I'm not worried about it this time, but the fact is, we've never talked about it.
We need to look into that.
My suspicion is, we have some control over that.
That'd be some good information to know on the front end of this thing, probably.
But, okay, but the fire, how does the fire districts work? They get point oh four.
I think maximum, and they all max them out.
Right, that's the max, that's the max thing you do. Right.
Every one of them is maxed out.
That's they're gonna take that.
It looks like it.
But, yeah, the other, and when you start saying this is their piece they get, and then look at the dollar value they get, nineteen thousand dollars or.
Yeah.
But even, some of them are very minimal.
Yes, yeah, that's.
I was like, that's very minimal.
Where my folks are buried.
Reasonable, I didn't think it was unreasonable on there.
Yeah.
Mitchell Valley, Mitchell Valley, where my, my parents are buried, six thousand six hundred and forty-nine dollars is what they get in here.
Right.
And Bob Bush takes care of the cemetery. Anyway, good talk, you guys, that's, anyway.
Alright.
Next part is that I did advertise, and I have my, what do you call it? What do you call that?
Ap備備?
Ap備備, thank you. That we did advertise for these meetings. Uncollected taxes, that comes from Heather, obviously twenty twenty-four, and this was as of June thirtieth. We should have collected like twenty million dollars in August, when they were due. And there's still, that's how much is outstanding from the prior years as of June thirty, this little paper. I guess I could be going over it, but up here too. Anyway. Yeah. And then the last page, two pages, is inter-local information, the inter-local agreements we have. And honestly, you guys, I'm gonna tell you this, well, we aren't using the five cents of inter-local necessarily, but I think we can only claim public safety now, but I went ahead and listed most everybody anyway. Public safety, I would think having insurance is public safety.
Yeah. I think so.
Yeah, there you go, but, anyway. So, then, then, yeah, as far as my packet of information, then I have my supporting material that I've shown you guys before. And I thought it'd be good to keep it all together, you never know, if I'm not here doing this next year, they might not wanna know what stuff we looked at, but.
When we look at the, this sheet of uncollected taxes.
Yes.
Um, I'm assuming that that's not unusual, people are like a year behind or par- partial year behind.
Well, that's how we, that's how twenty twenty-four taxes are paid in April and August of the following year.
Right.
And this was as of June thirty.
Yeah.
So, we hadn't collected August yet.
The second half, yeah.
That's what we're collecting right now.
For most people.
Hopefully, hopefully she got most of it. So, and at one point she was concerned it was coming slow.
Twenty million's a pretty good number.
Yeah. But, not a lot from prior years, but still, not everybody's paying their taxes, you know that, so.
But I'm assuming that that, that's not unusual numbers right there.
It's not, I mean, I could go pull you in that last year's, I think it's very similar.
Right.
You know, your twenty twenty-three line there at sixteen thousand?
It might not be the last year.
Is that, uh, has that been covered by, uh, uh, an investor? I mean, is that, or is that still wide open?
Might be still wide open, that would be a Heather question, that maybe that's the one she's trying to collect, and they'll be on the tax list.
Really? Uh, yeah, that's, I didn't know if you. I didn't know if you knew that or not, I knew that would probably be.
You know, there's some things I just don't ask enough questions.
If they're still out there, they will be covered by an investor.
A lot of them could be, but I didn't know if that was, and, you know, or if that's not.
And I say they will be, I mean, it takes someone willing to do it, and if some properties are just totally worthless, which we sometimes find, they don't get vids on it.
Right.
But, that's pretty unusual, I mean, that's a low percentage.
They cost more to foreclose on than they're worth, I think, sometimes.
Yeah, right. Sometimes they're just not worth it.
Uh-oh.
So. Based on that information, the only other two things we need to go through today is the, finishing this resolution. And I do have a budget message that I've put together, and I'm gonna ask for the chairman's signature on the budget message, so I'll read to you what I have. The last six years, I've copied what we've done in the past years and have a very long, boring message. Okay?
This one you.
So, this year, um, it's just same thing, throwing some different numbers in there. But this year, I've looked at what other counties do, and they keep it pretty simple, so, decided to keep it pretty simple.
They have a Lisa message now.
Yeah, yeah.
Good deal.
So, I'm gonna read it to you and see if you are good with it. Scotts Bluff County Commissioners had the following goals when developing the budget for twenty-five twenty-six. Fiscal responsibility, cash reserve growth, and adding no new debt. Fiscal responsibility. Commissioners met with key department officials to review budget requests. We asked officials to build their budgets responsibly, remove inefficiencies, and prioritize essential needs. A disciplined approach was expect, ensuring every dollar spent delivers measurable value to our residents. Uh, next topic, cash reserves. A strong financial foundation is critical to weathering economic uncertainty and funding future needs. In past years, we have reduced reserves in order to meet our budget goals. This year, we placed importance on maintaining and slowly rebuilding those necessary reserves. Debt. Scotts Bluff County has four outstanding bonds. Two are scheduled to be pay off in twenty thirty-one, one in twenty thirty-four, and the fourth in twenty thirty-seven. Commissioners are reluctant to assume more debt and want to focus on paying off the current debt, debts relieving taxpayers of this burden in future years. This budget is more than numbers, it is reflection of our values. We thank our residents for our, for their continued trust and support, and we pledge to uphold the principles of transparency, accountability, and fiscal prudence in every decision we make. And then I put in a C attach list for petty cash balances held by officials as required. So, this is something I'll put in your packets.
Sounds very good.
I like that.
You're good with it?
Yeah.
I got last year's number of uncollected tax for you. It was twenty-six million.
At this time of year.
At this time.
At this, when she was.
So, we're a little better than.
Yeah.
That's surprising, so much different, wow. Anyway, it's based, Heather tells me, I don't question her.
Right.
So.
Um, which bond is it that, um, that pays off in twenty thirty-seven?
Um, the remodel that was done in twenty seventeen.
The jail remodel.
The jail remodel, you know, three of those four bonds are jail, and I think the highway one is one of the twenty thirty, or the twenty thirty-four one that's paid off, this is the one, twenty thirty-seven is when they had to restructure and take out the juvenile detention, and that was the reason we had to remodel that jail in twenty seventeen. Unless someone remembers a different one, but that's what I recall.
Oh, no.
I think that.
I'm sorry.
Sheriff talked a little bit about that yesterday at our meeting, and I think that probably would go along with what you're saying.
As far as.
Well, we talked about a juvenile jail, uh, at, at Naco yesterday, and I think we had a really good discussion there, it went really well.
What is the thought, was Kimball talking to do it in there?
He gave a really good talk on that, and I thought that really went well.
I thought, yeah, I thought Kimball wanted it.
Kimball's, Kimball's is a little different, theirs is a more of a mental health.
Yeah, it's a mental health treatment center.
What do they call that kind of facility?
It's a staff secure, which means the kids could leave anytime they want.
Right.
Yeah, it's kind of a walk-in, walk-in service.
It's a.
Kinda like Andy Griffith.
Called staff secure, so.
It's a no-hold service, basically.
Right, it's not a jail. And so, what they were saying was, um, we could still do both, and they wouldn't be competing at, against each other. It's not the same thing.
They'd actually be, uh, compliment each other, because most of those kids, when you have them incarcerated, they frequently have behavioral health appointments.
Sure.
And sometimes they need to be someplace for a day or two, or three days, and that'd be an easy fix by just taking them to Kimball. And there is a, a certain level of supervision, uh, so, uh, it's better than taking them to somebody's office nine five.
But what we heard was that there seemed to be quite a bit of support from several counties with the thought of trying to get something done with some kind of a juvenile facility, and that they might be willing to help pay for it, or somehow.
Do an interlocal or something.
Yeah.
Serious, and would, would we try to, would Scotts Bluff County try to steer that, or somebody else?
Uh, you said.
Steer that.
Steer it, steer it, and probably be the, the, yeah, the primary entity, you know, still talking about the. Um, we talked about the Jessen property some, talked about doing it at our own jail, but then that would require some things. But, um, I think, uh, as Mark was alluding to, that again, now, exactly how the money would come, we're hoping some money might come from the state, is what we're hoping for. Mark did an excellent job yesterday.
You know, he explained to them the pitfalls of getting into this, you know, uh, Cheyenne County were thinking they could just, you know, take their courthouse and remodel it and, and turn that into that. Once he explained to them that they need medical onsite, that they've gotta have all the things, you know, you, the, the meals, all the stuff's gotta be contracted, you gotta have all this here, you know, we can, w- with our jail, we can take on two or three more people. But when you have meals contracted, you have all this stuff done, you've gotta take some meals when you have nobody there, or, or how are you gonna contract that, you know? And so, he explained a lot of things to them, and when, when they walked away, those guys had a way better perspective of what it costs to run a jail and a, and a use.
I thought for the first time, they were maybe interested in cooperating.
I think Cheyenne County, Kimball County, and some of the others up north were very interested, the fact that basically, it could be a satellite of our jail, because we could bring food from our jail to there. We could send a nurse from our jail over there at a certain time of the day to do checkups, med, whatever, and so, that would be a real cost savings.
It's a big.
And that's what's getting them excited, is, but what they're wanting from us is for us to take the lead in doing a study as to what would it take to get either the Jessen building in shape for a detention center, or, uh, redo our jail, and convert the old juvenile site into a juvenile site again, the cost there, and make the comparison. I myself, I really liked the idea of the Jessen building, it's a great location, it has room for twenty-two beds.
I think we kinda have a meeting set up with those other counties to look at that building.
So, I think, uh, we're at a really good point in this time, where I think we have counties that are really thinking seriously, committing to help us support that.
I think for what everything costs right now, you can see with our budget, their budgets can't look any rosier than ours do. So, I'm thinking, they're rethinking that what it's gonna cost to build something like that, when we can just, you know, put an annex on ours, or buy the, the other, but I think we need, before we go and do a lot of exploration, I think we need to get, find out who our allies are gonna be, and everybody can pony up a percent to get these things walked through.
So, anyway, point to all that is, there'll be some discussion of that, I think, over the next six months, and. Um, Mark Overman will be bringing probably some stuff to us to, to talk about, and, um, the, we're all faced with the same thing, and as Mark said it, um, anything, if we have a juvenile, and we have to end up taking them to Madison, or even into Iowa, he said, it's costing three hundred dollars a day.
Plus the expense of transportation.
Plus the transportation.
Have them back in three days, then you gotta go through it all again.
Right, so, anyway, they're all facing the same costs, and, um, so if we could, um, get those costs down some, and or even if it was the same, the transportation would be substantially different. So, anyway, point only is for you guys, I, I can see that coming up on the agenda here one of these days, to talk about at one of our regular commission meetings.
Kinda, we made Don Leach yesterday, we made him kind of the go-to guy, anybody have any questions, they can go to Don, he can set up a meeting or. It'll kinda revolve around Don Leach, cause he kinda brought it up and started the whole process yesterday.
Hmm, okay, um, interesting, I guess, when they did have it here with our detention center, but it was, I mean, there was a lot of funds coming in, it was, while they could send kids there, it was well-supported and the money flowed.
Right, for a long time, and then, of course, they said, things changed with the state, and the judges, and we went from housing twenty juveniles a day to down to five.
Right.
And that's when it, that's when they decided to make changes in sixteen, seventeen.
Plus, with that number of kids, you, you wouldn't have to use the required number of teachers like we used to use.
Oh, yeah.
Because it's a smaller population. So, that cost.
Thinking, is, would they still be up in the twenties, or you're saying they wouldn't need less teachers, or?
It's just they wouldn't have, we used to have like two or three teachers from SU thirteen over there every day, and being you'd have a reduced number of students, a max we could hold would be twenty-two, and most likely, you, on a good day, you might only have half of that. So, you're probably looking at one teacher to meet their needs. So, that would be a cost savings there, compared to the old facility.
Okay, anything else to discuss before we try and act on this?
Yeah, you will sign the budget message, cause it does, like I said, you, I'm using their forms, and they say chairman, chairperson can sign.
So, this specific motion is, um, approving the resolution for setting the property tax request, and are we including that other, do we need to say anything about the?
And approval, chairman's sig- approval of chairman's signature on the budget message.
Okay, and we can do that in one motion?
Beautiful.
Is that right, I'm, I'm asking.
If you're asking, I.
Should be able to do something, I would think.
I would think we should.
Isn't it all part of the budget?
It's all part of the budget.
It's all part of the budget.
So, we'll see how the vote of the budget goes.
That's what they're kinda.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. She's saying it's all part of the, you don't have to stipulate it, cause it's part of the budget packet.
Right.
Okay.
Could you just repeat that motion, Mark, so we can utilize that motion how it should be?
Read this at all, or is this, are you good with?
Well, it's short, I guess you could read that, and.
Okay.
Just, and not even so much for our benefit, but the recording that's probably gonna be broadcast.
Okay, whereas Nebraska revised statute seventy-seven dash one six three two and seventy-seven dash one six three three provide that the governing body of Scotts Bluff County passes by a majority vote on a resolution or ordinance setting the tax request. And whereas, a special public hearing was he- held as required by law to hear and consider comments concerning the property tax request. Now, therefore, the governing body of Scotts Bluff County resolves that the twenty-five, twenty-six property tax request be set at fourteen million, three hundred thousand, two hundred fifteen dollars in the general fund, and nine hundred ninety-three thousand, seven hundred thirty-seven levy to the bond fund. The total assessed value of property differs from last year's total assessed value by seven point eight seven percent. The tax rate, which would levy the same amount of property taxes as last year, when multiplied by the new total assessed value of property, would be point three four zero six two per one hundred dollars of assessed value. Scotts Bluff County proposes to adopt a property tax request that will cause its tax rate to be point three six seven four one two per one hundred, hundred dollars of assessed value. Based on the proposed tax request and changes in other revenue, the total operating budget of Scotts Bluff County will increase by last year's, but actually, I think it was increase or decrease last year's budget by seven point one two percent, and I'm gonna circle decrease. No, it's increased, I'm sorry, this is, we're just talking about tax ask, property tax. A copy of this resolution be certified and forwarded to the county clerk honor before October fifteenth, twenty fifteen.
Twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five, so.
Okay, so that's the, um, resolution. So, uh, do we have a motion?
Almost accept that resolution.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Alright, hearing done, we'll vote.
Mine, there we go.
Nobody's.
Oh, I'm, I've got one more click, sorry, guys.
Now, you're ready?
Try it now.
Heck, better.
There we go.
There was one more step to the process, dramatic pause, we'll call it, okay? You have two yeses and one no, the nay being Mark Harris.
Okay, and I will confirm with you, you know, I did talk to Jason Ocean today, and he said that when we have three people here, we certainly have a quorum, and all we need, um, to approve this is a simple majority of who's here.
Right.
So, the motion carries. Okay.
You don't have to slide this, it's doing the magic, I need your.
Yeah, there's that one.
That's.
Part of that.
Part of that.
Okay. And so, if we'll leave these packets here, you'll put them in a binder.
Put them in a binder, or I'm in a binder, I can do that.
I think so.
Yeah, with all the documents.
Oh, you missed the good stuff we said about you.
Oh, no. You did.
They did, too, they talked nicely about you.
We thought you done a great job yesterday.
You can catch it on YouTube.
You made, something like, if you'd have written that out, you did a really good job.
Yeah.
You answered a lot of questions for those guys, when you left that day, those guys were very excited.
They were on board.
Yeah, they're on board.
They're on board. But you know what, I think Steve Urban wants to sell this report back to the commissioners, and, and I think that, uh, uh, he's been recent skids, yeah, I think he's been talking to some of these commissioners.
Oh, really?
I think so, because, because he, he said to me.
Okay, you guys?
We got, probably gotta wait.
Are we still?
We don't need to do any more votes that you know of, right?
Correct.
Okay, and so, is there any other business? Alright, hearing done, meeting's adjourned, now let's talk about it.
Well, let me shut stuff off.
Okay, maybe you better.
And somebody needs to leave.
Well, that's true, of, as far as.
I just won't listen, kinda getting here, I do anyway.